I want to read a letter before we get into the agenda. The letter is not my remarks, aren't to anyone. It's to all of us who we admit. I want to take a moment to address the disruptions that have occurred during recent meetings. Our village strives on open dialogue and free exchange of ideas. But this must always be done in a manner that respects the process and the rights of all participants. And I know that everyone agrees with this. We are here to discuss important issues that affect our community. And it is vital that everyone has the opportunity to be heard in a constructive environment. Disruptions only serve to undermine this process and prevent us from reaching the outcomes that best serve our village. I kindly ask everyone to maintain decorum and allow our meetings to proceed in an orderly fashion. If you have concerns or opinions, there will be appropriate times for the public comments during the meetings, and we encourage you to express your views then. However, let me be clear. Continued disruptions will not be tolerated, and we will take the necessary steps to ensure that our meetings can proceed spooly and be productive. Thank you for your understanding and cooperations. I'm sure everyone agrees with that. Public comment on agenda items, please. And again, we go back to the rules. I have them behind me. I don't want to take 10 minutes and read them. If you all want me to, I will. A part of that that I've done two meetings ago says three minutes. It says a lot of things that this whole board, they're not my rules. They're not, it's not my law. All of us voted to have those. But it's three minutes, and I'll be honest with you, by the time I get this thing on, and I always go three and a half. So when I ask you that your time is up, please respect that, okay? It's a long time. You can say what you want. It's actually three and a half minutes. It should be only three. So public, a public comment on agenda items. Yes?
Can I just ask you, wrote that letter?
The one I just read?
Yeah.
It's signed by me.
You wrote the letter?
Yes, the answer is yes.
You made it sound like somebody else wrote it. Okay, never mind.
Never mind. I don't know what you were saying. Okay, um, public, any public comment? Okay.
Joe, mayor?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Ruffka. I'm Katie George, and we're part of the Highland Falls Follicles United Youth Group.
Do you have a, is your comments on the agenda?
No.
Okay, so we have a spot. And then she's telling me you have to go home and do homework.
No, I've got a definition.
Good. Public comment. Okay, thanks. Okay. Bills and claims, this year 24, 2025. One bid, $186,474.66. On the agenda, you'll see some of the bigger ones, which a lot of them are little reimbursements. The $86,000 on the bomb, that's for section eight. We don't pay for that. And the rest are construction jobs. So if I could have a motion to pay the bills and claims, could be the thing.
Like a motion?
Is there a second?
Second then. After reviewing the documents.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Opposed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Next.
Oh, I had a quick question. Did we get issued, Heidi, the $3 million of the $6 million for the flood authorization that we did?
Trustee DeSavo will be here in a minute, and he'll be able to give you that answer.
But no, why, why wouldn't our village clerk know that? Or you?
I, I believe so. He's been bothering the month.
Okay, I gotcha.
We were allowed, I think, $6 million?
Yeah.
And he has taken...
So we've gotten all six. Okay.
No, no, I didn't say that. I didn't say that. Well, I'll wait for him to come to get the better answer.
Aye.
And I have the minutes that were taken on October the 5th. We had a, October, we had a regular meeting on August the 5th, 2024. They're in your packet. I reviewed them today. I find no, no corrections to be made. Do I have a motion? Motion by, uh, motion by Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, next, we have a property maintenance violation. We just have one tonight. Is there anyone here that owns or represents 60 Schneider Avenue? This is a notice that he has, that this property has failed to remedy the conditions. You have the conditions there. You have the code that the violations were written under. And we have to accept, we should accept his non-action and refer this back to the town building department.
Are you planning to vote to remedy the condition? That's what you said.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have to, we should remedy him because for whatever reason, he is not. We'll tell the town, and then they, they actually pick the person to go in and clean it up.
All right, so then the motion would be to instruct the building department that the due process hearing was noticed and no one appeared. And so the building department should move forward with remedying the violations.
Okay. Just hold on a, hold on a second. My packet has...
Can I just shorten that and just say, make a motion for the building department to remedy the situation, which is high grass? This is a property that we've sent violations, notice violations to. His grass is too high. Cut it, cut it, cut it. He won't cut it.
Yeah.
So now we're gonna have to hire somebody to cut it.
That's right. And we, we put it, he doesn't pay up, pay the bill, we put it on his taxes.
The record must reflect that a due process hearing was open, enclosed, and no one appeared.
Right. Is there anyone here representing or owns 60 Snyder? You want an open and a close?
Yes.
Okay. So could I have this public hearing on this violation open with a motion?
Motion to open a public hearing.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Anyone want to make a comment on this? 60 Snyder Avenue, our lawyers will close the public hearing and send it to the town.
It's a due process hearing, yes.
Yeah.
It's for the purpose for the, the owner to appear and grieve or otherwise object to any type of remedy being taken by the village. That's why it's a due process hearing.
All right, since there's no one here to speak on 60 Snyder Avenue...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Okay. All right.
Then now would you move it, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, now you need to move it. I think trustee here noted the motion. I just added that, you know, on the record that the due process hearing was open and closed, and no one appeared.
Correct.
Yes.
I'll second that motion when it's declared. To send this back to the building department so they can do their...
We normally don't do that, but that's fine. Let the record show that there was a motion and a second to send this back to the building department to remedy.
All this, I think you just said...
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll do one more. You guys gotta help me out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a resolution. Whereas on September the 9th, 2024, the village board meeting, the village board approved, approved the budget transfer from general fund to workman's comp. Now therefore be resolved that the following budget transfer be approved. $2,420.60 from general fund and take it into workman's compensation. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Melanie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried. Okay. All right.
Then now would you move it, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, now you need to move it. I think trustee here noted the motion. I just added that, you know, on the record that the due process hearing was open and closed, and no one appeared.
Correct.
Yes.
I'll second that motion when it's declared. To send this back to the building department so they can do their...
We normally don't do that, but that's fine. Let the record show that there was a motion and a second to send this back to the building department to remedy.
All this, I think you just said...
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll do one more. You guys gotta help me out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a resolution. Whereas on September the 9th, 2024, the village board meeting, the village board approved, approved the budget transfer from general fund to workman's comp. Now therefore be resolved that the following budget transfer be approved. $2,420.60 from general fund and take it into workman's compensation. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Melanie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I had a question about workman's comp. How many people do we have in workman's comp?
Well, probably every employee.
Well, I mean, who's actively, also every employee has it as a benefit, but somebody's monthly getting a workman's comp paycheck.
If, if the workman's comp board found them, found their injury or whatever it is, shut it out.
Do we have any?
Oh, we have, we have one in particular that you would fall over if you only knew.
Oh, okay.
Check downstairs someday. You'll be shocked. Seriously. Okay. All right. Can I have a, did I, did I do the motion? Do I have a motion? Melanie, you made the motion?
Yes.
Was there a second?
Peter.
Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, we have an employee that's going to be retiring very soon, in a month or two, more like two probably. And that's Mr. John Jones, who has been for many years our wastewater treatment operator. He has a special license. Ours requires some type of special grade three. And he's also been running our DPW. So this is gonna be a loss. But in the meantime, just to see what the figures are... I don't have it in my packet. Heidi, do you? The notice request for proposals? All right, I have one here. I have one here. So what I'm asking is the board to approve this resolution, which lets us be able, our engineer in particular, go out and see what kind of pricing he can get, like we did with the water plant, for the sewer plant. There could be a savings, preliminary, I'm told there is, but that's preliminary. So this is a notice for request for proposal. If we could just, doesn't mean we're going to do it. It just means we're checking to see what the pricing, what the prices are out there in the, in the workforce for this sewer plant, wastewater treatment plant. So may I have a motion to allow this to go through at this point for the reasons I stated?
So question, this is about privatizing the sewer department?
Yeah. Yeah, like we did, like we did the water.
Okay, all right.
Just to see what the prices are.
Uh, no, that's a good idea. And I think it is a good idea if we can show cost savings and efficiency, which we didn't do with the water department. And we can also, I think it is also a good idea if we can show that a private company can give us access to advanced technology for cheaper. So no, we didn't do any of that without water department privatizing, so I just hope we do this differently.
We, we, we did, but that's okay. We're gonna get that. Okay, so is that a motion?
I'm making a motion that send out an RFP for the wastewater treatment plant operations.
Okay, is there a second? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All?
Yes, and one more discussion.
I'm a night, I mean.
Yeah, yes, no opposed.
Do you want these handed?
Sorry. No, just wanted to talk about this more so people understand what it means to privatize the water and the sewer plant. So now we have BRI, who was the only bidder, okay? And we didn't really do it the right way by getting separate bids to privatize the water plant. It ended up being more costly than actually having village employees run the water plant. So what I would like to know is if we can actually combine the company that privatizes the water plant and the sewer plant, if we can actually get a better deal than having separate companies run both plants. They usually come together. So when we look for these bids, you know, I'd like to make sure that if BRI is gonna bid for it, that it's gonna be an apples-to-apples comparison. They're bidding because they're already running the water plant, and they want to run the sewer plant at the same time. And if somebody else bids, we should give them the option of running both plants for a specific price, okay? And for the people who are listening right now, every year we spend about $424,000 in salaries and benefits for the full-time employees and the part-time employees in the sewer plant alone, okay? So almost $425,000 just for salaries and overtime, okay? Especially recently, when we caught one of the employees cheating. All in all, the cost of running the sewer plant is about a million dollars, okay? And that includes equipment that we need to change and things that we call contractuals. Contractuals are certain things like chemicals, you know, or getting rid of sediment. That's called a contractual, so operating expenses. So if we were to get bids, it has to be apples-to-apples bids, okay? Instead of giving it just to BRI once again to run both.
All right, let me, I need to continue to me, but let me say just a couple of things. It's illegal to give X company a bid for the water plant or sewer plant and Y company for the water plant and sewer plant, different specs. That's illegal. We, we don't do that here. That's number one. Number two, we did try to get other companies besides BRI. We did. And for different reasons that I could ask the engineer and report back at the next meeting, we did. And as far as getting a better deal, if someone came in, the same company, and ran the water and the sewer, I don't see, I don't, I don't say this with disrespect, but I'm ahead of you. I've already had that conversation.
Okay.
All right? Okay, all right. But I just want you, I just want to correct, it was done correctly. All right, next on the agenda is to approve Mental Health Day sponsored by the Center on Saturday, the 28th of September at Lady Cliff Park. It'll be from 10 to 2. This is a going, this is going to be a very, very nice event. A lot of different vendors. I've been working with Lisa Sibley on this, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be really, really nice. So they've submitted an application, and they have submitted their insurance papers. May I have approval?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Next, we have the 31st Annual Fall Foliage Festival. I look at this, I started it 30 years ago, and it's still going. I'm very happy. The, I ran it for years, then the Historical Society ran it for years, then the Ambulance Corps ran it. It's a good moneymaker for those organizations. And so they want to have it on October the 5th, as we always do out here on Main Street for the day. They have submitted their insurance, so we could approve that. I appreciate it. Motion. Second. By Jimmy, seconded by Jimmy. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Do you have insurance?
Yeah, they have insurance. They gave you insurance, right, Heidi?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we have James I. O'Neill High School, 2024 Homecoming Parade sponsored by the James I. O'Neill PTFC on Thursday, October the 17th, where they ride through Main Street and they decorate their cars. It's, it's a good thing they started it a few years ago. If we could, if we could approve that.
So moved.
And there is insurance with that. Motion by Jimmy DeSavo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melanie. All in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? Motion carried. Next, we have a request. This is doing it the right way for a change, for a second birthday party. On October the 5th at Royal Park, baseball field, pavilion, bathrooms from 1:00 in the afternoon till 7:00 at night. And we have insurance for, for that. And could we put that on the calendar downstairs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion by Melanie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim DeSavo. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved? Motion carried. You have the next thing on the agenda. My agenda's, it's this lady, the junior. No, I have this. Okay. There's a junior member with the Highland Falls Fire Department that's being recommended to us. She lives on West Point. Say her last name for me, Heidi?
Lorelai Pfaff.
P-F-A-F-F.
That's correct.
Okay, could we approve her? It's being recommended by the fire chief.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay, could we also approve a chief's request to have Engine 428 attend the Orange County Parade on Saturday, the 28th of September? A lot of stuff happening on the 28th of September. Could we allow that to be? Yes, can I have a motion?
What, the chief?
Yeah, this one here.
Oh, yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Melanie. All in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? Motion carried. Next, we have from the fire chief, he's looking to, that we authorize him to contract with the Orange County, with Orange County for the use of the county fire prevention trailer for the Fall Foliage Festival on October the 5th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? Motion carried. Could we accept the recommendation from the police chief that Jaden Little be released from his employment as a part-time dispatcher? With the Village of Highland Falls, Jaden has not provided any availability for several months.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Ramos. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion carried. Could we now approve the senior mechanic, Tim Green, to attend the annual pesticide training in Auburn, New York on October 10 and 11? The cost of the, to attend the class is $105. Lodging is $110 per night. Reimbursement for meals and mileage per employee travel expense guidelines. We would like him to have this, so he can legally use the pesticides on the sidewalks and other places. Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peter. All in favor?
I have a question about that. How come Tim Green, he's our mechanic and he's a supervisor, so why not Mike Jones? He's our DPW laborer.
Well, first of all, this isn't the best answer, but Tim has already had this. He has to just redo it. There's, he has the interest in doing it.
So...
Okay, so... You can, you know what? You can say it.
Oh. Yeah, okay. Yeah, you guys, good to get it up home.
Did you do some homework?
Yeah, a little bit.
A little bit.
I just wanted to give you guys a first, too. I kind of everything I was done, I think.
Very good.
Go ahead, go ahead. You're all right?
Um, basically, I'm Elizabeth Ruffka. I'm the treasurer of the Town of Highland Falls United Youth Group. I'm Katie George. I'm also a part of the United Youth Group. And I have other girls. Yeah. My friend Ava here, could hear today, she is later. Probably, you know, so, but we just wanted to come here and just talk about a situation that happened in the last meeting, where me and my friend Ava got brought up in the board meeting about some behavior that we had apparently during, when we were trying to do, start, do something nice for the community, we wanted to get an idea for a history podcast. And I just, I don't want, it's not really necessary to go into complete details about everything, but we just wanted to come here and kind of say that. We thought it was rather unfair to be talked about like that, when we weren't here to defend ourselves.
We just wanted to clear our name, you know, Lila and Ava...
I know, I personally never thought about it again, but...
Yeah. Lila and Ava are very active members in the group. They do a lot for the community, as we all do. And, you know, I don't think it was fair that Ava were talked about in a just the way that doesn't really, you know, characterize us.
So noted. Very, very much noted. Thank you.
That's right.
No, anytime. Thank you.
I think it is important, because I, I believe that it hurts your feelings, right? You know, I, I really do believe that the United Youth Group does a lot of good things. And our community's future really lies on youth, the young people of the community. So for all people who don't know, okay, 20% of our population here in Highland Falls is 18 and under. That's the youth, okay? It's you. And for many parents who are involved, who are homeowners, many of you plan on staying here. You like the place, right? And your parents like it here. And you kids are actually gonna be paying our village debt, okay? And we're up to almost 20 million right now, okay? So you're, you guys are gonna be paying that debt. So the United Youth Group ladies, I really appreciate that you're coming up here, because I think there were a lot of hurt feelings at the last village board meeting, okay? I, I'm sure Peter didn't mean it that way, and, you know, of course, he'll speak about it on his own, but the United Youth Group is led by very well-meaning adults, okay? Your mom, Sally Dorsh, DeeDee Moreno, Monique Wolf, Christine Manning, Debbie Jersey. These are all people, adults, who really take the time to nurture you and make sure that you're involved with the community, that you do good things, that you improve yourself, that you improve the other people in this village. It's a very small village of only one square mile. There's very few people who live here, okay? And that the real leaders are you and your parents and the people who nurture you. and make sure that you're involved with the community, that you do good things, that you improve yourself, that you improve the other people in this village. It's a very small village of only one square mile. There's very few people who live here. Okay? And, uh, that the real leaders are you and your parents and the people who nurture you. So it's really not a good idea to disparage you and make it sound like that, uh, you're not involved or not interested, or just bad kids. You're not bad kids.
I didn't hear that way, but-
So disrespecting young people like you and the adults who support you is just, to me, wrong. So thank you for coming here and clarifying it.
So, what is this?
The QR code.
Perfect. So, do you have another one of these handy? I would like you to take it to the back and put it right in front of that camera and tell the camera, anybody that wants more information about your group, it's QR code. And that's what the younger generation does, correct?
Yeah.
And I'm gonna make this one really easy. If you take this mission statement and you got to send this to the local paper, this would be phenomenal to have in there with your signature. Easy ones, right? Thank you so much.
We just wanted to let you know that we didn't mean to come and disrespect anybody. We just wanted to let you know.
No, it wasn't taken, it so isn't taken that way. Good job. Thank you. Okay. Somebody-
I think the emblages, I'll get the bar tools first. Maybe you can zoom with the camera?
I think that's what you do.
Yeah.
I would have rather had them do it. It's, uh, this is their mission.
It's a good, it's a good thing I put them forward.
Absolutely, absolutely. You got, you got it, Sean?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, Mike, thank you.
Here. Uh, Michael Joyce, a member of the village of Highland Falls. When I went to the meeting on Mountain Avenue Middle School, trustee DeSavo said a statement that I was very, very concerned about. When it came to improving the situation for the tax base, now, you, you can correct me-
Oh, I will.
Thank you. But I, I think you said we should take our time about making the decision to improve bringing in industry or something to alleviate the taxes from the good people of Highland Falls. And correct me again, is there only 1,000 residents in this area that has the burden of paying the taxes?
About 1,100.
Okay, sorry, uh, 1,100. 1,100 residents carry the burden?
No, that's not accurate.
1,100 homes.
1,100 homes, sorry.
About 1,200 parcels. I don't know who pays the taxes in those parcels.
Okay, well, 1,200 parcels carry the burden of taxation.
Correct.
So we've already had a real estate increase of 5.5%. Recently, we went over that 2% threshold, so we could increase real estate taxes. And the next water bill, I believe, and correct me again, because you are the money man, there's a line gonna be on there of an increase of 22% on, on the water bill? Is that correct?
I'll answer one, it's my turn.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, man to man, I mean, I'm talking to you because I'm worried about, I'm worried, basically, look, I'm worried about your inaction. You ran, you ran to improve the lives of the villagers of Highland Falls. For 20 years now, you see decline, decline, decline. The tax base is getting smaller, smaller, smaller. It's time to get off the fence. You're gonna run again. And what are you gonna say to the people? We have another 10 years to think about it. They don't. The school taxes have gone up again. The school taxes go up every year. And for inaction to have real estate taxes or water and sewer maybe the next time to increase again, that's a heavy burden on these people that a lot of them don't make, and correct me again, 80 grand a year? Is there a lot of people in Highland Falls that make over 80 grand a year?
So the median, the median is about 92,000 a year. But that's counting West Pointers.
Right, right, well, I'm just talking about the people in, in Highland, in the village.
I just want to be respectful, you're coming up on three minutes in a bid, not yet. And I'm gonna let you go over it, like I said, but, go ahead.
Well, my, my point is, if you wanna run for office and you want all the glory and the power that goes with it, think of the people in this room and that are watching, that count on you to make a decision. As a command sergeant major said to me one time, make a decision. Make a good one. Make a bad one, but make a decision. Don't be, ah, I'm not thinking about it, I'm thinking about it. Make a decision. These people are counting on you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Yes, yes. How you doing?
Doing well, doing well, all right. Uh, Brian Fedixon, uh, top of Mountain Avenue, I had the sandbag house, I guess that's, I've heard about that. Uh, so basically, I just wanted to say, uh, it looks like I'll be trying to go forward with funding and everything to repair the back of the house. My thing is, is I saw in another Orange County town, they got funded for a grant to study the dam brook or their waterway. Uh, I was wondering if we could apply for that. I think, I spoke to Justin, he said that we were denied that one. But if we could try to get a funding for-
I think that was called the brick, did he mention the word?
No, it wasn't bricks, it wasn't the brick program, it was another study. It was close by, I forget the name of the, the town or the, or the brook. But, uh, Scoofus just put something out about it. All I'm saying is if I'm gonna spend $170,000 to fix my wall and keep my house here, that the property, that the property that touch, the village property that touches the brook, we have an understanding of what they, we could do as a village to repair or make it better so as to properly water manage as it goes into the private houses. Because we are hurting at the top of the brook. If you walk at the brook, it's still the same, it's just getting worse. And I think that the study would help the village identify areas on the property that they own in order to properly water mitigate and make sure that water comes in and stays in the brook and doesn't jump the walls like it did, causing the damage. So if, if we could just do something like that, because I am gonna, I'm working on getting that done. And, um, it is a lot, and I just don't wanna spend it, and nothing else gets done, and I'm dealing with the same problem in a couple of years.
So let me, uh, let me, uh, let me give you some information. I had a meeting with Senator Scoofus last week and, uh, brought up, uh, a couple of things, uh, that we need help in. And I told him, and make no, I, I said, make no mistake about this, the brook, for me, I've said this now to him and to a couple of other politicians, for me, the brook is the worst, the biggest issue I have. It's the biggest issue I have. And if anyone in this room, or anyone watching, thinks there's not gonna be another flood for 50, the 50-year flood, I'm, I wish you were right, but you're not. Uh, we're going to get hit again. So, uh, uh, with the engineer, I have all, this is important too. I say 90, my engineer says higher than that, but I'm just gonna stay with my 90. 90% of the water that enters that brook from Mountain Avenue down to Wine Green comes from the federal government and New York State. Think about that. He, my engineer, who knows more than I do, says more than 90. Okay? So that's, that has to be addressed. That has to be addressed, and there's a meeting being set up with DOT and West Point. I already have West Point's map. I'm waiting for DOT's map of all the different culverts that enter, that enter the brook. Next, next thing is, um, so, so, so that's gonna be looked at. What has to happen with the brook is, and these guys have all heard me say this, it needs to be cleaned out.
Yes, the rocks-
Those boulders, yeah, they're boulders, they're not rocks, I know you know that. But they're taking up space. They're taking up water space. And the brook has to be cleaned. Now, the last estimate to clean the brook, 40 million. Okay? So that's not gonna happen that way. But I had to figure out, and Scoofus has to figure out, and Ecas has to figure out, and Steve Newhouse has to figure out, and a lot of people smarter than me to figure out, how can we get this done? Maybe help West Point, we have to get creative here. But, uh, Brian, I'm telling you, and I think you have more to say, I, it, it, it's the number one problem for me. I spend a lot of time on it. The office staff knows this. A lot of time on this. I'm not happy, because the, because the flood's gonna come again.
Oh, no, it is.
The flood's gonna come again. Flood's gonna come again.
So my documentation of the brook and the water levels when the water, when it rains, uh, I've been documenting it and everything, so I have an idea of when we're expected to rain and what we're gonna see high water and where it's gonna go up on the top of the brook, basically above Mearns. Myself and the other homeowners that are up there that are along that brook, we do speak. It is a very dangerous, that is where the water all rushes down into-
That water that's on the road uphill from you is West Point.
Yes.
That's all West Point.
Um, I spoke to a lawyer, and nobody really wants to tackle suing West Point. And it's just gonna be too much money, and I'd rather spend, I'm gonna keep my house at a four on Internet brook, because it is getting bad. But I figured that, I read about this, and Scoofus said something about it, I think, or Pat Ryan, someone said something about a, a, a study that the state funded for the brook to properly, how to properly manage it or how to properly fix it. I think that's something that we should look into.
Yep.
Seeing as how, you know, some of the homeowners are gonna be spending their own money to fix, uh, fix the saw, the saw damage. Uh, number two, this is just a side note, the parking lot on Mearns Avenue, it is a, it is a public park, so when we get visitors come up here, they park there. Can we get someone to go over there with a weed whacker? Knock it out, um, it hasn't been cut in months. And it's just unsightly, I had some people come over and they were like, we, we parked down there.
It's really belongs to-
We thought we were gonna get, uh, the snake was gonna-
It really belongs, it really belongs to ONR.
Really?
But, 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 no, it's okay, that's okay. We use it, they let us use it.
Yeah.
A weed whacker is nothing, it'll be done.
Yeah, just come down there and give it cleaned up, because I was gonna do it myself.
No.
And then, uh, my wife yelled at me, so.
It'll be done.
And, uh, that is it, like I said, the big thing is the brook, that was my big concern. And I'm working with, uh, with, uh, trustee Ramos on, uh, dealing with the DOT for the front of the thing with the curb cuts, because that is another issue, that is something that we need to do.
Let me say a couple of things to you. Uh, you're gonna see a curb there real soon.
I hope so.
We, we talked about it today.
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna see a curb there.
Okay.
Okay, that's number one. Number two, uh, um, I sent my engineer up there today, Justin.
Yeah, I spoke to him.
Okay, so he hasn't, he'll see me first thing in the morning, because I, my guys are gonna go up there and clean up the, the, the dry dirt, the mud. We'll be up there tomorrow.
Thank you.
Did he tell you that?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
He'll be up there, they'll be up there in one morning, God, God willing, and something else. No, 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 don't do no more. We'll do it.
Thank you.
Okay. Done deal.
All right, thank you very much, guys.
Uh, just one thing, Brian and Mr. DiNofrio, did Senator Scoofus just release $150,000 for helping homeowners because of that?
He didn't relea-
The damages?
He didn't release it. Uh, late this afternoon, I got word that I had to put a letter in, but we, but we'll have it. It, we'll have 150, and it's earmarked, uh, downhill from him for a couple, uh, a culvert that's broke and something around the bridge, uh, Eagle Valley Bridge. He's still from Minnesota.
So it bypasses his property?
Yeah, uh, well, with that, I mean, the, the survey says what the survey says, and, um, you know, it is what it is, and I gotta get it fixed, plus the housing market's not good to sell. And foreclosures not good for you. So, we're gonna basically be doing that, I just wanted to let you guys know that they did approve a, a study grant to study the brook, and I think that's what we need.
I'll find it.
The boulders, to check into that, so that way when we do make the repairs, at least we know that something can be done to prevent the water from jumping.
Hey, John, uh, and this is for Brian, uh, across from your house, I live down the street from you, nice to meet you. Um, you have a house that parks four or five cars, jet skis, and old boats.
That's not much.
I noticed that, yes. But that's depreciating the value of your property, because, uh, anything that looks like that shouldn't be there, but-
That's peanuts compared to-
Anything else, anything else for the board?
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's illegal for him to park on the front, number one. Number two is, most of that water that destroyed his property comes from stolen boats, that culvert right up above that property.
Comes from West Point?
Yeah.
No question about it.
I looked onto a lawyer just to explain.
No question about it. Any other, yes, Ed?
Yeah, I, uh, Ed Dunn, Village of Highland Falls. Uh, this is a totally different subject that has to do with the upcoming event, which is gonna be your comprehensive plan. And re, uh, reassignment of different zones in a zoning area. Now, A, talk about the height of a building, 40 feet, five foot bonus. What are you gonna do with five feet? Make a little room for midgets? Doesn't make any sense. And also, in Highland Falls, in a zone five, you can build a building for seniors, 70 feet in height. So, what are you talking about with height restrictions? Why can't there be 70 feet for a senior center or a senior housing and only 40 feet?
Where's the senior housing?
Rita's, right in the, it's-
But there is a one now, right?
Not now.
Yeah.
Unless there was the water damage that you get down there. So you wipe that place out, clean out that one spot, and open up the brook, and build a 70-foot tall building there.
You're saying in R, in R, in R5?
R5. It's right in the code.
Okay.
And that's, that's one thing. So these things have to be talked about before you actually bring a proposal for it. That's in October, correct?
Yes.
The other thing is, I propose that we do something with that senior center, wipe it out, build a parking lot there, a parking garage, and have these people who want to invest in Highland Falls pay for the parking garage. But like a four-story parking garage there, I don't know what the dimensions of the property are. I'm sure that your engineer can figure that out really quick.
There's been discussion on this, on this-
Do that, and it solves the parking problem. The hotel, if there's gonna be a hotel, and when I'm-
What do you do, what do you do with the senior center?
Put it in the bottom level.
Are you saying underneath the parking garage? We, we, we've talked about that.
It doesn't matter if you go, they can go right there.
Okay.
And have these people pay for it that want to build places here. Why not? That's all.
Okay.
For now.
Can I ask, so we have on the agenda that September 30th, we're gonna have a workshop. Is that a village board meeting or a workshop about the zoning?
No, it's a village board workshop. And I was thinking about making, depending on what comes in between now and the 30th of September, maybe that might be the only thing on the agenda, is to talk.
Because it doesn't make sense to have a meeting on the 30th of September for village board, and then another meeting one week later for a village board meeting. And to call it a workshop means that none of these people can actually speak at that meeting, because it's a workshop. So, I mean, is it necessary to have one meeting after another? Or-
Board members feel it is, yeah.
So you wanna have a workshop regarding the zoning on September 30th, and then a meeting seven days later for a regular village board meeting?
Yeah.
But on the 30th of September, none of these people can speak about the zoning?
Well, I, you, you say that, and I understand that, but, uh, I think that these folks who have been to our workshops, are allowed it, they end up, everyone, everyone has a-
So don't allow them to speak. Okay, very good.
You know, to a certain extent.
One more thing.
It's a workshop for us to get something done.
One more thing, with respect to the, uh, the, you know, the square footage of areas, blah, blah, blah. You know, 2,500, 1,250, uh, and we at the planning board talked about eliminating that. So, really, what we should deal with in that business area is, if you're gonna have a, if you're gonna have a one-bedroom apartment, let's say 800 square feet. If you're gonna have a studio apartment, 600 square feet. If you're gonna have a two-bedroom apartment, let's say 1,000 square feet. And deal with it that way. That way, you're not boxing yourself into a-
That's what we've been talking about.
That would eliminate a lot of, a lot of heartache. And if you could figure it out, you could probably move ahead with this thing and get a comprehensive plan going and actually get something built in this village.
So you're talking about making it a zero-square-feet lot requirement? And then just making the requirements for the residential part? Okay, you said yes?
I said, that's what we've been talking about. It seemed, and it seems, and it seems, and it seems to have support.
To 1,250, to 850, to 0?
Am I right?
That would be great.
I believe that we have already sent a letter up to the village.
That's why we need to talk on the 30th.
In October, October of 2023, you sent that, one year ago, you sent that letter.
Okay?
Yes, I agree.
I, we've actually been, I, we've been talking about that, and I think it's gotten traction now. You're welcome. Kim?
Jack, you're younger than me, so, sure, I just gotta go. Okay.
Three minutes, Jimmy. Three minutes, Jimmy.
Okay, I'm a hundred percent forward with, uh...
I just gave Ed five, but that's 'cause I went to school with him.
Just said, uh, forty feet doesn't work, five foot doesn't work. Should be fifty feet to the highest occupied ceiling, to the highest occupied ceiling. I say that because if someone wants to get decorative with a roofing system or overrun on elevators, you have to allow that to happen as opposed to restricting in the building because of that. Okay, so fifty feet is the right number to the ceiling of the, um, highest occupied floor. And I agree with Ed a hundred percent, uh, you should abolish this ridiculous square foot per unit. Um, we've talked about it multiple times. I encourage everybody to come to the planning board meeting on Thursday. Uh, Mr. Ramus is always there, Mr. Carroll stopped in, um, and, and asked us about it. Uh, there are four members of the planning board that has been there for twenty years. When, when, uh, they've seen this a thousand times. When Mike Bosch says that we should replace our brakes, we should replace our brakes. When Jimmy Ripper says you should replace the brakes and rotors, you should replace the bro- brakes and rotors. When you go to the planning board, and the planning board's making a recommendation, you should probably, uh, weigh that recommendation higher than some of the, uh, people who have no experience in this. That's enough for you.
So Jim, Ed, just one comment. It sounds like you're hearing from the board today that they're in agreement that the requirement go from twenty-five hundred to twelve fifty, to eight fifty, to now zero-square-foot-lot requirement. Okay, so they're agreeing with you?
No, hold on, hold on, Ms. Guerrero.
I hope at the workshop, that is what is said, because that's what I'm hearing.
Ms. Guerrero. That, whoever, did she, did she go send to you? That's not happening.
I did not say that.
I don't know who she...
Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry, that, I thought that's what I was hearing.
You, you maybe heard from somebody else, you didn't hear from me. No, no one heard.
Oh, nobody's, nobody's hearing.
Still need a plot of land to build something.
Correct, and, 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 and Ed and Jim, you know, I've been to the meetings. I've given you my opinion. Um, you guys have enlightened me on some things, you know what I mean? So, you know, I learn every day, right? We all do. But, but I have concerns as well, and I'm sure you guys know, as, as well that you brought up, is, uh, Ed too. About, and Joe just brought it up tonight, about, uh, the flooding that we have and the stormwater. So there's a lot more than just changing a zone to zero, or putting more height and all of that. There's a lot, and this is why we need a workshop, not only with the village board, but with the planning board and with the zoning board, because I think when we all can get together, we can actually, uh, discuss and say, oh, wait, we didn't think of that. Or, no, that's a great idea, let's continue to move forward with this. But we need to sit down in a workshop to do that.
Any public comment? Public comment?
Um, just one thing, uh, Mayor Joe, I know that Mr. Ramus is, uh, has the best interests of the community. Um, Mr. Dunn does, I know what Jack does. It's all about the level of risk that you're, uh, prepared to take. Uh, I know everybody wants the best for this community, wants to stay here. Um, so I, I watched this for fifty years, and, you know, we've moved into our community, and I'm prepared to take some risks.
Okay. Any other public comment? Yes, Jack?
Yeah, I, uh, read an article in the News of the Highlands, a letter to the editor from a gentleman from Illinois. And then it appeared on social media as well, and I'd just like to comment on that. He, uh, started out by saying that, uh, you can't get a hotel here. He's a connector, and you can't get a hotel locally. And then he goes beyond that. It seemed like, it seemed very strange, this letter, like somebody had coached him or putting him up to it. He had words like density and all of the things we're talking about here, like somebody was behind this, but anyway. He, uh, then made some assumptions, and then he made it, turned it into a political attack, saying that you, all of the boards should be voted out because they're not doing this. And he was wrong on his facts, maybe misguided, and he just left. But, um, he says that, uh, you can't get a hotel. His, his fix is to, to change the, he's saying that the, the board, the boards are not accommodating, but they are. Let's talk about hotels. We've had three hotel projects come before zoning board, the planning board, and the village board. First was the Old Guard Hotel up on Line W. They went, came to the zoning board for, uh, variances for wall height, that's pretty easy, and building height. They got through all of that, they even changed the shape of their building, that, from a straight to, and put a bend in it, and then that, that allowed for a lower wall. They, there were a lot of concerns from the public and down on Burns about water running off down there. So when they got to the planning board and the village board, the village board says, fine, you've gotta do something about it. They put up seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run a wa- a line from, I think, Burns down very, under Berry Hill Road across Lickens Field over the creek. They paid for that. Then, the Holiday Inn Express came forward. The owner there wanted to put up a name-brand hotel, uh, on his property that would be perpendicular to the existing building on the north side. Uh, came before the zoning board for a height variance, I believe. Orange County Planning said, you know, that's in the Hudson River Review shed, it should be lower. The, the owner immediately said, we'll just take the top floor, just like that, without any thought, consulting his engineer, anything else. I thought to myself at the time, it sounds like he's playing chicken with the Old Guard, maybe he was, maybe wasn't. Then, Mr. Minicozy came forward. He wanted to put up first a condo motel, and he said, well, that isn't even in the code, what is? You need to sell to the building board. He did. And again, the, the writer in this article's saying, you know, that public officials are holding things up. No, Minicozy came to the village board. They made a very huge change to the zoning code in February of twenty twenty to allow the condo, no, condo hotel, a hotel. Um, he got everything it needed, except he asked for too much. He said he's gonna have a mix of luxury suites and standard-sized rooms. But by the time he got to the planning board, the planning board said, wait a minute, you're short, how many parking spaces, twenty?
Oh, yeah, something like that, he's, he's actually right now about thirty-something short.
Yeah, he said he was short, okay. Then he came back and said, well, because of COVID, my building costs are going up, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna have luxury rooms, I'm gonna have standard-sized rooms. So now he needs even more parking, which he never got. The village tried to accommodate him, that's my point, they've been very accommodating. They said, well, lease you parking spaces at the, uh, senior center. Go behind McDonald's and get a place to park, do something. He never did. Instead, he says, well, now I need money from the IDA and a pilot payment and lieu of taxes. You know, he talked about how all these taxes he was gonna pay, well, he's not. He's, if he can ever get going, he's gonna try to get a pilot to lower his taxes. But the point is, the village bent over backwards to accommodate him. The process worked at all levels of zoning, planning, everything else, contrary to what the man in the papers saying. There was nobody trying to, uh, to slow things down. Um, it, it's, he's just flat wrong. Now, hi- his solution is to, uh, the writer is to go to more density. That would mean more apartments, not hotel rooms. What good, that wouldn't solve the problem of hotels in the village. Would create a lot more, and I, I thought, well, maybe he's an investor in one of these places, I don't know. But what it, or maybe he's thinking Airbnb, which are not allowed in the village for very good reasons. But whatever it is, that would not solve the hotel problem, it will change the density. And then finally, I thought, well, I'm gonna look this guy up. He's in from River Forest, Illinois. That's about ten miles west of the Chicago Loop, that's downtown Chicago. There's an east-west interstate just about a mile or two away. It's about two or three miles southeast of O'Hare Airport. The land in that, that's the Great Plains out there, it's flat, it's not mountainous like we are. Everything is laid out, north, south, east, west, grids, lots, you know, nice, stable-sized lots, not like us built on the side of a mountain. That's his town. And guess what the density, I looked it up, he, we have B one, B two, B three zones, and we're talking about twenty-five hundred. They have commercial zones, C one, C two, C three. In each one of those, the density is, wait for it, twenty-eight hundred. One for twenty-eight hundred, it is more restrictive in his hometown than what he's complaining about in our hometown. So I'm just saying, the, the political attack on this board was not warranted, I don't know where it came from, but this community has done everything it can to encourage development. Um, I would not change the density down to twelve fifty like they're proposing, that's not my call, it's theirs. And it's not the planning board's call, they can advise, yeah, but it's up to you guys to decide how to, how to do this. So, uh...
The, uh, just so you know, the Holiday Inn and the Old Guard are back on the, whatever we wanna say, on the drawing board.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, I got calls from, uh, both hotels. I'm meeting with one of them tomorrow, just so everybody has a say, but they're back.
And the other point...
It's been a long time with Old Guard Hotel, we haven't heard a word.
Yeah, I think, you know, it probably have been, it was game of chicken, and I think they chickened out, it might, well, yes, but anyway. The, uh, if I didn't say it again, this, the other thing the writer in this article didn't know is that this board had already put up, put up a proposal about changing the density, doubling the number of apartments allowed in the village by cutting it from twenty-five to twelve fifty. Again, that's more than I would do, but that's their call.
I understand.
So that's what I had to say.
Thank you, Jack. Okay.
Jack, I thank you for bringing that up, but I, I do have a question. Okay, not, not to you, but to the board. Uh, Pete Carroll and myself, uh, uh, were not here when you say that they were bending over backwards for Mr. Minicozy and his hotel. So I, I've actually had a question about that myself. So you had changed even the density to three hundred and fifty?
No, that was a mistake, and you know it.
Well, it's not, but also, so the three people who are here right now who approved it... But no, no, but...
There's a new rule, let her go, let her go.
That's not the point, the point, I'm, uh, my question is, what is it that you think that made him stop building?
Who, Rick?
Yeah, Mr. Minicozy.
Well, i- i- if it, if, if he's being honest with me, he told me COVID, interest rates, he went from forty million to sixty million, that's what he told me. But that, that's, he's told me that a few times. That's all I can tell you, I can only tell you what he told me.
A little small part of it.
Yeah, small, 'cause I wanna move on.
And you can, it'll be only five seconds. A, there's actually three shovel-ready projects, okay? One of them, the Old Guard Hotel, been shovel-ready for a couple of years. Minicozy's joint, that's been ready for a year and a half, three years, prior to COVID. And the, uh, it's gonna be a Hilton down in Fort Montgomery, which is in the town, and that's slated to start next spring. All right, so they...
Over and above Holiday Inn?
Yeah, on the, on the same site.
Oh, 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 on the same site, that's the flag he's getting, okay.
Yep, that's gonna be a Hilton. They went through numerous lawsuits from, that were initiated by different people, blah, blah, blah. And finally, got them all cleared, and now he's gonna start in the spring.
Okay.
So that, that's what's on the board as far as hotels. As far as Rick Minicozy and the people up at Old Guard. I'd like to see Old Guard Hotel though, it was much prettier hotel.
Okay, so, you know, I, this is, I'm, I'm being honest, I really don't know what stopped it, I really don't. Okay, I, I'm getting the same answer as, uh, Mr. DiNovero, he said, which is COVID, interest rates, construction costs, all that stuff. But I, I agree, I mean, I'm confused myself. If you're saying that it's shovel-ready, he has all the permits that he needs from the planning board, the zoning board, even us.
It's not parking, right?
I'm just wondering what it is that is not making it happen.
Who, Rick?
Oh, no, the Old Guard does.
But you're talking about Rick, I think.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Well, he doesn't, yeah, he doesn't have enough parks.
No.
I talked to Rick about two weeks ago about building the, uh, car garage where the seniors under ads were putting the thing down below. And everything, he said, I got enough parking, you know, and talk to me, talk to me, talk to me.
He was short.
And I knew he didn't, I knew he didn't, but he dismissed it.
He's got enough parking for a nominal season of the year, but not...
Seventy or fifty?
He, he didn't have enough when it was seventy-nine, and now it's a hundred.
Right, he doesn't have enough parking.
Okay, any other public com...
Then it's not us, it's not us.
I need to comment on what, what Jack just said. Jack identified the fact that somebody out west had twenty-eight hundred square feet per unit. I am sure that that community is, uh, ten square acres, twenty square acres, thirty square acres. We are one square acre, uh, one square mile, so I'm sorry about that. Uh, so I, I'm sure that's why that represents twenty-eight hundred versus twenty-five hundred. Um, uh, also, it's definitely COVID, it's definitely interest rates. Uh, COVID stopped everybody from doing everything, interest rates doubled or tripled the cost of, of construction money. It's, um, you know, what we have to do is put ourselves in a position where builders, developers, and I hate to say, uh, people's names, because for us, it's a developer, and he's gonna invest in our community. Developer A, B, or C, I'm fine with anybody who it is. If someone to come and invest twenty-five or thirty million dollars, I'm gonna, I'm gonna peel that back. Ten million dollars of his own money and thirty million dollars of bank money. Uh, we should be, we should embrace him, we should say thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Hello, Betty. Orange County Legislature, where's the hotel? I want to commend Lisa Sibley for the event that she's doing on September twenty-eighth, and also bring to the attention of our community through our newspaper, through your media feed, the importance of mental health awareness. And I have sat on the statutory committee for health and mental health, Orange County, my entire tenure. There are many resources that are available throughout the county. We have mobile mental help, they will come to you if you don't feel safe where you are to talk. They will meet you at a secondary location if you feel like you are in a crisis mode. I just wanna encourage everybody, there is a huge mental health crisis going on in our county, in our country, in our state at this point in time. There are a lot of people who are not being treated the way they need to be treated. I want everybody to just take a moment, listen to what the people next to you are saying and what the people next to you are going through, and extend some kindness to them. Listen to them if they need help, guide them, or guide them to me, and I will make sure that they get to the places where they need to go. This is Mental Health Awareness Month, and it's an important part of surviving in our community as a neighbor and as a community. There are too many people that we've lost to suicide here in this community and in our county. And if we can prevent one, just one, it's a huge, huge thing.
Can't say enough about Lisa, she's doing great, thank you. Any other? All right, I'm gonna turn this over to the board.
Just a couple of quick things, do I need to stand, or can I sit? Okay, cool. Um, I just wanna tap on a little bit to the conversation of the investors, um, that have been, you know, did the presentation and are talking about coming to the village. Um, I think it's very clear that we do need investment, but I do also agree that we need to slowly take what's coming at us. I think if we go from where we're at to the top of the ladder here, we can't backtrack at any point. But if we take certain steps, I think that would, um, be safer for our community. Um, I did like very much the presentation that was given at, um, the elementary, uh, the middle school up there. Um, but I do think that there needs to be some middle grounds with the investors and with what the village, I think, wants to see. Coming from a place of being hometown USA, and your idea of demolishing what we have and building brand-new giant gaudy square brick buildings, I think is just not quite right for us. So I would just say to the investors that maybe bringing some architecture to what you're presenting to the village, I think would go along with it. Um, I also just have a couple, a couple of other things. Um, is there an update on, we had, uh, there was some conversation about the sidewalks getting possibly redone through a grant or something?
That hasn't been announced yet, yeah, Ole Skins.
Okay. And is there going to be...
There's a grant out there for Ole Skins, a couple of months ago.
Yeah, it's been a little while, I just wanted to say something on it. Um, and also, is there going to be a rescheduling of the public hearing that was supposed to happen for the comprehensive plan? Or is that...
Right now, we have a, for October one, is it, or seven?
That's the zoning...
Oh, what is your question?
The, there was, there was a public hearing on the comprehensive plan that was just scheduled and then canceled.
Oh, it's just been, there's no date. We wanted to go through this zoning, all this other stuff first, trying to get that done, and then, and then tackle the rest of the comp plan.
Okay. Um, and just one last thing, um, Ms. Guerrero, you have, uh, often you vote no on the approving of the bills and claims. And I find that a little concerning, um, one that, why are you voting no? And why does the rest of the board not really seem to be concerned that you're voting no?
Uh, I can't sure. Okay. It's been going on for about what, almost ten months?
A little while now, yeah.
Yeah, they haven't approved bills and claims for ten months. And yes, there is a reason for that. Um, and, um, I don't trust the numbers that are being given to us and the invoices that are being presented to us by, um, um, the different contractors, and especially when it comes to flood-related projects. And as you know, we are being investigated by FEMA. Uh, I don't know what the name...
I don't know what the nature of that investigation is. All I can tell you is I don't trust the numbers myself, which is why I say no to the votes.
And I say, and then we're going to move, you don't have anything else?
No, that's a...
So I say to that, I think it would be very responsible for us, for Mrs. Carrera, to tell us which ones needs to be questioned, or which ones she's questioning, or which one isn't right, so that we're not approving something that we shouldn't. Now, I can tell you that we're not approving something we shouldn't. I can tell you that. A hundred percent, I guarantee that, okay? And as far as FEMA, again, I would like her to show me, because if we're making a mistake, I want to know, okay? But I haven't gotten that yet, I haven't gotten that information yet. As far as FEMA, FEMA is a, there was someone from this village, maybe in this room, who called up FEMA and said things that weren't true, called up FEMA and said things that, you got to bear with me, that weren't true, called up FEMA again and said things that weren't true, and they were, they had told me that they were going to probably put a cease and desist on this person, and it wouldn't happen again. It couldn't happen again. I don't know the law would cease and desist, but that's what they were going to do. Have they done that? No, but they're still contemplating it. As far as holding up, we're back on track now. We meet every Thursday, sometimes Friday, with FEMA and the engineer. I have, I have the, all of it here. I might go over tonight, all the projects that were paid for and some that weren't yet. They have held up every single, listen now, every single municipality in New York State who has FEMA projects that aren't paid for yet, they call it obligated, means the check's in the mail, every single one of them, not just the Village of Highland Falls. I know some people like to make, say things that make it look bad, or something's going on, but it's not true. I would sit here and say the words I'm saying tonight. In two, last week, and I'm not going to hold them to this, and I don't want you to hold me to this, they said in two to three weeks, checks would start to flow again. But I'm not, I'm, we'll see tomorrow, I mean, the end of this week when I talk to them again, okay? FEMA, to be honest with you, is running out of money. There's too many, you know, forget, forget climate change, I don't want to get into that subject, but something's happening, and there's more disasters, floods, tornadoes, everything, everything. And they, and they don't have the budget for it. And so they're putting the brakes on it. Doesn't mean something was done wrong, doesn't mean that at all. Doesn't mean those anonymous phone calls, and actually, they're not anonymous, because we know who it is, because they told us who it was. Okay, so, so everything's okay. And I'll do it right now, the Little League Field, you see it's all torn up, we're going to have the best Little League Field in northeast United States.
Are we going to put Leaping Willows back by the park over there?
Well, there's only one left, but yeah, I know.
No, you have like four at one time?
Yeah, well, yeah, because, yeah, we did. There were four or five there, yeah. But the Little League Field, they already gave us the money, so we're moving forward. Matter of fact, the bid's going out soon. Murns Avenue, we have the money for it, they're giving us the money for it. We don't have to wait to be that obligated, obligated word. So things, things are, things are moving with FEMA, because they have to. The water plant, Little League Field, Murns Avenue. There's so many projects, I don't mind you, I do come in, I'll make you a copy of this. Each one of these lines is a FEMA project from the storm. And right next to it, from last week's meeting, I wrote down where it is in the pecking order of being paid, or it's already paid. The red says paid, so the red ones are paid. It's just this sign. Saddle Lake Grove, Culverts, Bog Metal Road, Stormpipe, Stormpipe over at Row Park, I think that is completed. We had to get that completed before we do the Little League Field. So if you, anyone can come in, and I think I can give this to you. But I can tell this community, everything is fine with FEMA. What you're hearing is political nonsense, okay? It's that time of the season, you know? You know how you have to watch out, there's a certain time of the year when the deer run out? Well, that's what we're going through right now. Okay, just, if you have a question, come to me, I'll tell you the truth. I'll say it in front of anyone, no matter what.
Maybe, Joe, I'm sorry, but this is important, it's about sewer plant and water plant.
Yeah.
We, as a community, I know that you're in Texas, you save money, look at all the costs, whatever we can do, peel off $10 from the tax roll, from the tax assessment, whatever it is. We have to be very careful about keep sending this message that the village, one by one by one, department by department by department, is going to contract work. I remember 20 or 30 years ago, we had a great DPW, we had a great sewer plant, we had, you know, people that you knew, people that wanted to work in this community. I just think that we have to be very careful, and if we actually, if we actually identify $100,000 savings, we should understand how that folds into the 1,200 tax parcels that we can pay.
Jimmy, we're doing, we did that with water, and there's no reason we won't do it with sewer, so we're on. I agree with you, we all agree with you. Okay. The local, the 4.5 million, the local planning committee meets next Wednesday at the senior center at 5 o'clock to go over the projects. I do want the community to know that the village's projects, we can't get money to paint this building, we can't get money for this building at all. But we're going to have a water feature for kids, I don't know what you call it, slide or something, I don't know what.
Splash.
Splash. And we're going to have a fountain at the north end, not a fountain like at Memorial Park, but smaller. We're going to, we hope to do some crosswalks with Brick, a brand-new, much larger gazebo, sidewalks possibly wider, thus being able to put out street furniture and tables and umbrellas for restaurants, antique lighting, more street furniture, signage coming into town, and a pet project of mine, and I'm glad it's being approved, is an amphitheater at Lady Cliff Park at the bottom, where people can come, high school can come and put a play on, musicians can play, bands can play, poets can come there. Anything can go, be done at the amphitheater with seating on that slope going down. Also, you use your blanket, and you sit on the blanket, like you do at West Point. But this amphitheater is going to be very good, it's going to bring people to Main Street, hopefully to shop, eat.
I'm made of junk.
Jimmy!
I'm sorry, but...
No.
No, before, I think that you misunderstood me. I am not in favor of privatizing any of our departments.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay, the Historical Society, again, on September the 28th, Saturday, is putting on a show, a display for the hostages' return. They may have dubbed us hometown USA. Saturday the 28th starts at noon at the library. We mentioned Lisa Sibley at same date, the 28th, at Lady Cliff Park. Spanish lessons of 101 are being offered on September 22 to November 3. It's six lessons. At 264 Main Street, it's $40 for the lessons. Kids' Day, very, very big success due to Aaron Flock and the people that he has volunteered to help him. That was Kids' Day over at Row Park. And then last week, Ty King put a back-to-school barbecue on and gave away backpacks and all kinds of good stuff to kids, right there on Muller Avenue by St. John's Church. So all those things are good. This Wednesday, day after tomorrow, at 8:30, if you're available, if you're around, 8:30 in the morning, I know it's early, but if you came to Memorial Park, I'm going to hold a very, very, very brief ceremony for 9/11. 8:30 is the time that'll start. That night, Fort Montgomery Patriots Garden at 6:30 will be a much larger show than the one at 8:30. We received a $441,563 grant for the sewer from the state, and it has now all been recovered little by little when the job was done. So that saved the taxpayers quite a bit of money. The police department collects prescriptions that are either out of date, or maybe the person doesn't need to, it worked, and they don't need to continue to take them. They turned in 100 pounds, I think that's a lot, to be incinerated over in Duchess County. That took, that's about a year's worth of pills. The pills don't weigh a lot, they had 100 pounds. Okay, I already spoke about FEMA. Those are all payments are on hold, two, three weeks. We do have the money for Little League, we do have the money for Murns Avenue. And the gas line, Central Hudson's gas line will be going in on Regina Road and then over into Andor Park real soon. Once that's done with negotiating with Central Hudson, they're going to help pave the road. It won't just be the village footing that cost. Bear with me. I'm looking for, depending on Lisa, at least, depending on the contract that we have with Verizon, which I want to go over with you, but I would love to be able to lobby other cell towers, like, you know, T-Mobile, because the only one that works better with these towers is Verizon. So I'm hoping maybe we can do that. Some folks, I think Jimmy, you might know this, that I'm talking to West Point on three big items. One is, and this has to do with Columbia University also, trying to garner 100 yards of more, more land around Bog Meadows. Thus, thus being able to, it'll be millions and millions and millions of more gallons of water. That'll make us feel safe. So I'm talking to them about that, talking to West Point about this RV park they have across the street with letting it be, for them, but for us also, snowstorm, different things, parking, and then moving the RVs. They're up for discussion. And I'm going to have a deal with West Point. Jim, this was another one, I pay attention to what you guys always say, no matter who you are, but you put this up. I want some type of an agreement that'll benefit us in an emergency to get water from West Point, instead of getting on my knees and begging for two days and then it's given. I find, I'll do that, I've done it. But there should be something, a neighborly agreement, you have all the water, we might need a little bit, and that's a fact, you have all the water. Let's see. Talked about Highland Brook, it is crippled, I talked about gas around Andor Park, blah, 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 what else I have? Brian, I'm glad you're still here, I have it down, we're going to meet with Scoofus and Echus and some other people about the Brook. I'm almost done. Dublin Pole, streetlights, seniors, generator. Murns Avenue is in design, I think we're going to meet with all the folks on Murns Avenue from that very hill south. Probably do it on a Saturday morning. I would like the board's opinion, give me your blessing on this. Some folks on Route 218, some of that road is 35 miles an hour, and some of it is 40. We would like it to be town and village, one speed limit, 30. That'll take a resolution that I can talk to you about.
We got to talk to you about it.
Yeah, I talked to Bob Livesey, I'd like us to do it on the same day or real close, so it's not weeks or months apart. But what is the board's, you all right with it?
Sure.
Pete, 30?
You guys?
It's 30.
Well, the walkers, yeah, there's people who are walking, which, there's no sidewalk there, I wouldn't walk on that road, I'd be scared, but that's what it is. It's the neighbors down there, they speed, they speed on every street.
Is it the road, not the avenue, is that the town?
No, it'd be down by Aristos' property going south, Cragston.
Old State Road.
Old State Road. So I'll move ahead unless I hear objection now.
I don't have objection, but I don't think it's going to make the road any safer.
I agree, I know.
It's a tough road to walk on.
I know, I know. Ellen?
Oh, okay, all right, so it's late, just wanted to say thank you to the center. Congratulations to Ann Molina, she's the executive director of the Center of Highland Falls, and of course, the center itself. I'd like to congratulate them, because they're going to be celebrating a decade of community service here in Highland Falls and Fort Montgomery.
Maybe.
Ann Molina is an amazing person, she's dedicated her life to giving, volunteering for the community, and her services to the people has been going on for more than a decade, but 10 years ago, she put together the nonprofit organization. The Center of Highland Falls served not just senior citizens, but all people in the community who ask for help. She serves veterans like myself, the poor, the kids, and those people who are looking for a way out of dependency. So there's always something good happening at the center. It's located right here on Main Street. Please go to her website, it's thecenterhf.org for a schedule. Ann Molina is really the epitome of honesty and goodwill. Please say hello to her when you see her, congratulate her for a job well done. I also want to, I echo what Mr. DiNoferio said about Councilman Ty King. He organized a back-to-school block party last week, and again, all from just volunteers. It was well-attended, people had a good time. Thank you for him, to Councilman King for always giving back. All right, so I'm going to speak about FEMA, it's going to be quick. All right. So here's the thing about FEMA, and here are the facts. The village has been assigned a new FEMA task force leader. Her name is Christine Ginyard. She replaced a man named Daniel Doobie. We have had two Zoom meetings with Ms. Ginyard, it's not every week, it's every other week, since the beginning of the federal investigation, which started May 26, okay? And all monetary disbursements to the village has been held since May 26. So far, FEMA has given us 1.88 million out of the 36.5 million that were asked. So no, not all the projects have been paid. So I understand that Mr. DiNoferio needs to maintain the appearance of no wrongdoing, that's okay, it's good to be optimistic, but he should be more forthcoming about the situation. While it is true that FEMA may have temporarily held disbursements nationwide in the recent two to three weeks, they've done that, nationwide. Christine Ginyard mentioned that FEMA might release funds on a national level this month, but this may or may not apply to us, because we continue to be under investigation, okay? That's all I'm saying. So, what I will say to you, Mr. DiNoferio, instead of trying to make everybody feel better, it's going to be really very helpful if you or the village attorney could publicly clarify the nature of the investigation. What are we being investigated for? For the sake of transparency. It's also important that you stop suggesting that FEMA is investigating solely based on somebody making phone calls. And you keep looking at me like I'm the one who's doing it. Somebody making phone calls.
I stand by, I stand by every remark I make.
FEMA does not act on mere allegations on somebody making phone calls without factual evidence. They are not that helpful. So maybe what you should tell the people is, what is the investigation about? Okay? And then let the investigation take its course. And if it's nothing, it's nothing. All right, Building Department. So the Building Department, this month of August, there were 10 permit applications and 10 permits. there were 10 permit applications and 10 permits that were issued, 10 certificates of compliance, and six to one building permit inspections completed. There were eight violation notices, seven violation notices were closed down. There was also an email by a resident named Paula Holt, I have a member. She sent an email to the board asking about animal control, and residents also asked about it at the last board meeting. Because I guess there's a pit bull that's mauling other animals and biting people, right? And this is the process. According to our village code, Chapter 53, any dog that's disturbing the peace and quiet of residence, mauling other dogs, are subject to being seized and impounded. And that job is by our local police officers. Supervisor Livesey has arranged that animals that are seized by police officers can be sent to New Windsor because ours was damaged by the flood and it's being rebuilt. There is a process, but the first step is for the dog to be removed from the house once reported to the police. So wherever that process is obstructed, I'm not sure. But that is a process. First, you have to record it, the police has to get the dog, the dog has to be impounded, and then it goes from there. That's all I have.
Jim? Ah, yeah. So down at the sewer plant, just wanted everybody to know, this is for our last fiscal year. And what we were averaging down there was 992, 992,000 gallons a day. That's an average, right? That's a lot, because our speedies permit is only for like 1.3 million. But that's an average. Now, we know we had a lot of rain that contributed to that, and the numbers go up and down. They go anywhere from over the million to, we're looking at, you know, maybe 700, 600, 500, so it fluctuates. And that's an average. I have been working with the clerk about the numbers in the billing as well on that, because something isn't jiving right. And we know we had a lot of leaks that are getting fixed, but we still are trying to work on that. And that is based on information I got from the water plant as well. And speaking of water, doesn't matter how much water we can put in Bog Meadow or have up in our water basin. It doesn't matter. We could have 50 million gallons a day that they could produce. But if our plant can't produce it, that's where our restriction is for building. So it's based on what our plant can produce right now. Now, they were up there today, I was up there this morning, and they were cleaning some of the tanks out. Brian knows very well that they were. There was a little snafu up there, and some sludge came cascading down. And they immediately got up there, cleaned some of it up, and they're gonna help him clean the rest of it up tomorrow. But our plant, we're gonna have to look at that. And everybody talks about taxes. And if we need to upgrade this, upgrade the plant so we can get more clean water a day. Not only for this village, because we are committed to giving water to the town X amount per day, and we don't want to stop their growth down there. We got a Hilton coming in. And they're gonna need water as well, along with some subdivisions and other things. We have to take all of this information and put it into what we're gonna do for zoning. Those are all variables that we need to throw out the wall, make sure we know what they are, so the planning board and zoning board can make informed decisions and say, well, how much water are you guys gonna need a day? And they do that. They do that. But they need to know how much we have available as well. So, you know, we gotta work hand in hand with that. Speaking of the density zoning, so in the B1 district, well, with B1, B3 right now, because we haven't changed it yet, there are over 23 acres of land. So in the, that could equate to possibly another 1,600 units. Now, it doesn't matter if it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom, that's how many they can have. So again, density can, a number can at least let us know. I don't care what the builder builds. He can build one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, that's, the town code already has that. And like you all said, we need to adopt that into ours as well, as far as the size of the actual living unit. And we, and we're gonna do that. I think they have a great example down there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's done, right? But what we do have to do is think about our density. Down in the town, they have larger lots. It's a little easier for them, but up here, we're kinda constrained. And I did go over this at the planning board with you all, and you even said, you know, in the business district, side yards are zero, right? So you can build from side yards to side yard. And I believe the rear yards are 15, and they have given relief to them at the zoning board. So, and they can build all the way up to Main Street. So it's covering the whole lot. And when you're covering the whole lot, you're gonna create a lot more stormwater, which is another thing that we need to discuss. All good things, you know, but we just need to discuss them and figure out how we can manage this properly. Parking is another thing. Architectural review board, or at least some requirements that we can give the planning board teeth. So maybe we don't need an architectural review board, but maybe we set up the parameters of what these facets should look like. They don't have to reinvent the wheel. Here it is, you know, it gives them an idea of the builders and developers, what they could do. And then they already know. And they're gonna come into the planning board, and the planning board's gonna say, I love that idea. So, you know, we can help them along in that. When we go to changing the zoning, there's a lot of things that we also need to think about. And that is, when we change the zoning, if it went to zero, whatever, you know, I'm only one member on the board. And we could do that, or 625, or 1250, or whatever it may be. But once you cut it in half to 1250, this could present the village board with having a scoping document done. And this was discussed with the planning board's engineer. So that would be the first step, possibly, that we would have to do. And then after that, I have spoken also with the Orange County Planning Commissioner, where we would have to possibly do a generic environmental impact study. This all costs money to the village taxpayers. And if that's the road we want to go down, that's okay. But we have to be aware that these are costs that are gonna come with changing the zoning, especially if we do it drastically. You know, parking, municipal services, all of that goes into an environmental impact study. And that's what we're gonna possibly have to look at, depending on how much more we allow to happen. I'm not saying we shouldn't allow things to happen, it's just an expense that I want everybody to be aware of, that we're gonna have to possibly have. And it's okay, you know, I mean, that's the cost for doing progress. But a scoping document and an impact study take approximately, how long, at least? Approximately, a good year, right? Possibly?
You're talking about a full environmental impact study, I don't think you're quite there yet. It'd take a long time, they're expensive. Whether or not it would be required in this situation, I would have to consider that.
Okay, all right. Yeah, but it is a possibility.
Yes.
So, you know, these are things that we're gonna have to look at, and we're gonna have to see what the Orange County Planning Department also throws back at us as well, when they review, not just our draft, but what our final changes to zoning will be. You know, with these 23 acres of land, you know, a lot of it is right behind Village Hall here. So if you go up Snyder Avenue, Center Street, back down, this whole block can get razed, tore down, and rebuilt. This could be West Main Street. We could have another road in through there, it would be phenomenal. But are we ready for it? Are we ready for it? I mean, there's developers out there that will do this, and that could create a whole nother main, West Main Street back there for us, where we could be more like Beacon. You know, where they have behind their Main Street other places to go. And Warwick, the same thing, you know? So these are all things that we can do, and it can happen when we change this zoning, but we just have to be aware and ready for it. The most important thing, I mean, I could go through each one of these.
And we're gonna have a zoning, we're gonna have zoning meetings.
Right. The 70-foot, Mr. Dunn, it's there. You know, why aren't we adopting it everywhere else? Or maybe we should think about, you know, coming to a happy meeting between the 50 and 70, or whatever. I'm just saying, and then put that across the board. We, we, yeah, we have to look at that, for sure. It's something that we'll have to look at. Last, but not least, because the mayor knows we're gonna talk, I could talk forever. Next week is Constitution Day, one of the most important days of America. If you can get a copy of the Constitution right online and read it with your kids, it's a thing to do on Constitution Day. All right, Pete, anything?
All right, we were talking about the raw water department before. You know, I just looked at these numbers here. The daily water, raw water flow average was 400, 545,000 gallons. Well, I only started here about six months ago. When I started, I remember the numbers going as high as 875,000. So whether or not you think these guys are worth their weight, I do think they are. That's, they've cut it down one-third, you know, the water, the usage. And that's from, you know, attacking all these leaks and everything, replacing fire agents. It's all written down. They're still doing it. They're still got, half of this paper is about leaks that they're investigating or correcting, and fire agents that they're dealing with. The water level out there at Bog Meadow is at 73% right now. And they tell me that's not bad. Made me nervous. I went out there this week and took a look at it, it was down about four feet. And I got a little nervous about it, but that's, I'm new at this game. They said 73% is not bad. They said that, you know, they expect, and they started telling me about all the different things that yearly take place, especially in November, there's a lot of, a lot of rainwater. Anyway, Bog Meadow, the spillway looked good. That was lower Bog Meadow, and the water looked high there. Then you have Jim's Pond, that was, the water was to the top of the dam there. The 9W spillway, the same thing. And then they just put down what they're, what they're looking to, you know, what they got coming up this week, you know? There's a leak at 152, 154 Main Street. That's been a big thing they were working on Thursday and Friday, and this week they'll try to identify and fix that. They're still working on, TAM is to start cleaning the settling tank on the 9th, which was yesterday. And that's about it. And they're investigating all the lead that's still in the town. There's an investigation to find out about that.
All lead pipes have to be replaced. I have the grant, writing up a grant with Todd's help, so that we can, so we can get the cost to do it. There's a lot of lead pipes here.
All right, I'll turn it over to Jim, because we want to get home before midnight.
All right. I'll try to go smooth, but hang on, you know, buckle up. Give the monthly police report, there's a total of 921 calls. Rest summary, there was a total of 13. Two felonies, eight misdemeanors, three violations. Total parking, summons issued were 65. Parking meter tickets were 37, traffic were 28. And total revenues collected were $2,407. Total mileage by the different shifts was 5,339.80. So just a couple of quick things, no specific order. The privatization of the water plant, the process was filed appropriately. We put out the RFQ. We had a bunch of different outfits come and pick up the package, and we had one company submit. You know, we don't have control on how many companies end up submitting, but I think there were close to four, three to four companies that picked up the bid package. They pick up the whole package from the engineer that the engineer puts together. So I'm not sure where, what we're talking about in regards to any wrongdoings in regard to that. The reason why we privatized the sewer plant was because we had a loss in personnel, multiple people over a short period of time. And when Trustee Phillips was here with myself and him, we interviewed several people, and we found that what we were doing was increasing the cost of pay, especially for the chief wastewater plant operator. And I believe the final interview we had, I think we were up to 115,000, which was a significant increase from the previous. And that seems to be the situation. You know, even in the corporate world, you always have to pay more to replace the employee you have. And that may be our situation in the future at the sewer plant. So what does that mean? It means we have to do some homework. I've already talked to three different municipalities in Orange County that privatized their sewer many, many years ago. Why did they do it? Eh, they're kinda small like us, service-wise for sewer. They looked at the overall cost, they looked at legacy costs. The number that was thrown out tonight haphazardly, 425, 424, covers just payroll and overtime. It doesn't cost the $40,000 a year cost of benefits. That's a real number. That's a real number. And even if we get some contribution from the employee, it doesn't cover the full cost of those benefits. So if I have to staff with three full-time individuals down there, that's an additional $120,000 cost you have to add in. It was the same argument we had when we were talking about the water. No one's trying to privatize anything unless it makes a good idea to do it, and we're gonna get good service. So far, BRI has been terrific. And no one is an adamant about looking at it than me. Can ask anybody. Well, you can ask some of the folks that we try to work together with. We're gonna make sure that it's a good deal, no matter what company it is. And we have to go by what the numbers show us once we get the RFQ. And it's important for us to get the information back from the companies to see what the costs are. All right? So we're gonna do our due diligence. I appreciate what Ms. Olivia said in regards to making the change we need to make, but understanding where we are, who we are, and where we might be. Not to be afraid of that change, but to understand that it's a serious decision, and there's nothing wrong with taking a little time to follow the process. That's what my comments were at the meeting, to follow the process. You know, a year ago, we were underwater, as we hear from some folks who are still trying to mitigate their problems. Maybe we forget, sometimes you forget that stuff. I always talk to people about 9/11, like, you know, it was so many years ago, and you have less and less people. In fact, I have relatives that, you know, when we go to a veteran ceremony, or we go to 9/11, fewer and fewer people come because they forget. Well, this just happened a year ago. So I understand it seems like a long time, but in the scheme of things, we did put some things on hold because we were dealing with a tragedy. I don't like to use that, I'm not trying to do that, I'm just giving a little timeline. Other politicians like to use that stuff. I don't want to do that. So I don't want to make a bad decision just to make a decision. I don't like to do that. Anybody who knows me, I don't like to make, to do that. And believe me when I tell you, there's no glory and power in this position, is Trustee. I don't know what this fascination comes with when we make that comment. It's, to me, it's very, very silly. And I never ran for that, glory or power. Glory or power, that's interesting. In addition to the zoning changes that we're looking at, and sometimes I feel like, you know, we get a little browbeat up here, and that's okay, it's part of the job. The 40-foot plus the five was a starting point. The 1250 was a starting point. We've said this 50 times. Doesn't mean that's the end result. We've heard from a lot of different peoples. No, I have not gone to a planning board, but I've gotten waddered by planning board members at length. No problem, I appreciate it. I need the information to help me make my decision. I need the information from folks who live in the community to make my decision. And it's probably gonna change, probably gonna change two more times before we get to the day we have to actually vote on it. And that's And that's okay, it's part of the process. Process takes a little time. If we're gonna get it right, let's do it right. Let's talk a little bit about FEMA. As of today, this board has received no correspondence from the federal government, from the state government, or FEMA, in writing about any investigation. We received documentation regarding an audit that the state was here for, which they went through. Fine fellow, very thorough. While he was here, he was asked via email from his folks up at the state, somebody talked to somebody, and they said, while you're down there, take a look at some bills and claims, because you did the first audit and nothing really came up. Look into the bills and claims. Okay, no problem. He actually picked bills and claims during and for some of the payments that were made for the flood. Fantastic. I love audits. Some people get a little nervous for audits. Accountants are there for a reason. I love audits, because I wanna know if we made a mistake, I wanna know how to fix it right away. He went through the whole, he picked a point in time. We didn't pick it, he picked it. He asked for the information, and we gave it to him. Everybody stopped what they were doing downstairs, got him the bills and claims that they needed to look at, even in July, during the flood, and thereafter, took that, took that stack. Man, it was, it was huge, huge stack. And he went through them, him and his team went through them, entering everything in the computer. Very nice guy, very thorough fellow.
And I just wanna add something.
Go ahead.
This was for FEMA, and he said so many times, I don't even know why I'm here. He was annoyed that he was here, he couldn't find anything.
The joke was that I said, the joke was everything.
It all came from phone calls.
The joke was, the joke was, when I talked to him, I said, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to give you a 1099, because you've been here for so long. And he laughed, and he says, I can't wait to go, he says, because I feel like I've just been here, and yes, I had to do my job, but I'm really just treading water. And that's fine, that's what we want him here for. That's what we want him here for. And I appreciate some of the words from Mr. T. Lowe, and definitely Mr. Dunn. We're definitely gonna look at the height, we're definitely gonna look at the square footage size, we've addressed that already. I appreciate Jack General's comment about that letter to the editor. Very interesting, that fellow, I don't know who he is, but I think he got a couple things wrong on it, that was my comment on social media. I wanna talk quickly about accommodations. Accommodations that this board, and it's not every member of the board, because there was a couple different players. For the folks who came into town and wanted to do big things, whether it was on 9W or it was on Main Street, we made every accommodation we possibly could. And when I mean every accommodation we possibly could, we actually were willing to enter into a lease of spots for parking on the road that goes down to the Highland Falls Marina. We were gonna stripe spots, and thinking that, thank God we didn't do that, because we would have been, if there were cars parked there, we probably would have bought 20 cars that, when that road flooded out. But we actually gave a lease, I believe, our attorney, yep, shaking her head. We wrote a lease up and gave it to that investor, right? We won't use names. And that person never signed it, even though they had a parking issue. So that was one of several accommodations that were made. And kudos to the, I believe, village planning board at the time, to work on the deal that they came up with for the hotel on 9W. They spent over $500,000 in infrastructure improvements to deal with water, which is why maybe some of the sections that got slammed off of that 9W, Oak, not Oak, the different roads up there going up Berry Hill, maybe didn't get slammed as much, I know there was a couple houses that got hit very bad, but there was a lot of work that they did, over $500,000, kudos to them. Kudos to the village planning board at that time, and those members, some of them in the room. Nothing's wrong with having investors come to the community, nothing. But some of the investors that are doing a lot of the talking now, that are trying to push their agenda, have been in town. And while they've been in town buying up some properties, they've gone and actually reduced their tax base on their properties. That's cost village residents, taxpayers, $3 million more, because they've reduced their property base. What the, what the, what the tax assessor said was worth their property, your property on this lot is worth X. They went through, some of the investors we're hearing from now, and reduced it. They have every right to do that. They have every right to do that, it's totally legal. If they don't make a deal with the assessor, they actually go to court, it's called surstrary. They get a reduction in their tax base, and that in turn reduces their tax that they pay. But the bill's gotta get paid, so who picks it up? We do. The resident residents that can't get the reduction. So again, it's just part of, we appreciate all the information from the investors, but we also have to make a decision based on what the future of the community needs to, or hopefully needs to, be at. And we appreciate the input from the investors. I appreciate the information from the planning board, zoning board members more, I probably hold more value in that, because those folks have a little different feel, they're not necessarily making any money on any of this deal. They're doing it because they make $600 a year, and they wanna see the community, something great happen. And I don't, and I don't wanna be in the way of that, and I don't think anybody on the board wants to be in the way of that. And the last thing I'm gonna say is, and I mentioned to a few people, including Ms. Olivia, commercial versus residential. Actually, this weekend, I took a ride around Orange County before it started pouring. I know, Joe, you'll have to deal with it, two more minutes. Most of the communities around Orange County, different sizes than ours, different variations, focusing a lot on commercial, some residential, some massive residential, depending on where you look, but a lot of commercial investment, a lot of commercial things happening. And I think the reason for that is, and this is again towards my comments at the meeting at the school, is that the dollar for dollar, pound for pound, the cost to the municipality is different residential versus commercial. So we have to look at that a little bit, a little bit. I'm not saying it's the central key focus point, but we have to look at, if we add X amount of units, whatever they are, we have to estimate something. If it's 200 units, if it's 150 units, and that brings a certain amount of people, what the cost is to whatever, the school system, the water infrastructure, not the pipes in the ground, but how much we can put out of the plant, how much can the sewer plant take, maybe we have the capacity, I'm sure we do, but we need to look at it. And that's what I mean by the process. It doesn't mean we hold it so that we, those, these investors hopefully fly away and they get frustrated, I understand, it's government, it's very frustrating. And lastly, but not leastly, one more thing on FEMA, the $36 million that keeps getting thrown around was the initial estimate that was weeks after the flood happened. The total that we have to fix now is not that number. It is not that number. And I implore the board members to just not throw numbers out, go and talk to the engineer, go and talk to whoever you need to talk to to get the information, and just don't drop a bomb.
It could be the large ones.
And lastly, FEMA's budget gets approved in October, so I don't know if anybody's getting checks until then. That's all I have for right now.
Joe?
No, no, it's really, half a sentence, it's important.
It's very important. So I also spoke with the police chief recently about the dog problem, and he is getting new upgraded snares for any problem dogs.
And the contract was awarded to build a new shelter, should be starting soon by a local guy, and they did now get a vehicle for the dog warden who lives in Wapger Falls, they have now gotten her a vehicle, so that'll help.
And I do think that the town should take care of animal control.
May I have a motion, Joe?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Home favor?
Aye.